If we can get everyone to stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone could take a moment and silence their cell phones so there won't be any interruptions. Alright, Lauren, if you could come up and... You're welcome.
Good evening. I just want to take an opportunity from Board Appreciation Night to show you we have some deliveries at your table. Those are from all of the classrooms at GLP. And we have some special guests here who would also like to send us. Thank you for your support to our building, our one-to-one initiatives, and all of the things that we choose to do that sometimes aren't as traditional as you would expect. So we appreciate your support and they would like to thank you. So I'm going to introduce Wesley Flynn, Carol Horshol, JJ Hartman, Abby LaVerdi, and Maya Hartman.
And they just have some things that they would like to pass out to some of you.
They're representing Mrs. LaVerdi's class and also all of the GLP.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You don't...
Hey Carol.
Why, thanks very much.
Carol, raise your hand.
So Ms. LaVerdi, some of the... I don't think I'm on. So I'm talking, can you hear me? What do you think, Ms. Carter? Is that better? So some of these faces are more familiar to me than others, Ms. LaVerdi. They've been here at board meetings before.
Have you been here before?
I thought so, yeah.
Have you been here before?
Um, we go Mr. Carter.
Yes, I thought so. Thank you so much. You've been here before too. Thank you very much.
So once again, we thank you for your support, your hard work, and your commitment to the mission.
So we should read this one. It says, "Dear School Board, thank you for the wobbly chairs because they make me focus on my books." Can one of you guys explain what the wobbly chairs are?
Well, anyone else know about the wobbly chairs, how do we... um, it helps me focus.
What is a wobbly chair?
Well, it's something that you set in to, um, um, follow or...
I can tell you through the perspective of the educators, we've taken a really large look at flexible seating for our classrooms. And we'd like to say it can happen all at once, but even if it's pretty patient, they find things that are working in their classrooms, and we've been able to implement them slowly. Of course, I would like to do it like that so I don't have to over time. So Mrs. LaVerdi's had some interesting things added to her classroom, along with many other teachers. At the end of the year when you gave us the tax bill, I had a little bit for your classroom, I purchased two more wobbly chairs, so now I'm in the fourth room.
Wow.
Excellent.
Excellent. So thank you for coming, everybody.
Hello. My name's Emma Shidel.
Hi, Emma.
Executive Board. And on Board Appreciation Night, we'd like to thank you on behalf of Student Council and the students at Eaton Junior Senior High School. A small gift to express our gratitude for all the hard work you guys put in. So thank you.
Thank you, hon. So this is from our third grade class? Can you play it one more time?
Sure.
Excellent. Thank you, Lucinda. So I'd just like to also thank the Board of Education. Every year, you know that we get new volunteers who choose to spend hours in the Board of Education. Of all the years that I have been here, what I would tell you in the first couple of months is that this one is the most educational-minded, definitely student-focused, teacher-focused, school-focused, and really looking forward and innovative in their thinking. And you're a pleasure to work with, and you push me every day to make sure that I stay on track. So thank you as well. I appreciate it. Okay, so I have the wrong one up. This is not me. Did you see I had September up and not October? I don't know why. Yeah, don't we have... Bus garage. Mary Banco. So, Mrs. Banco?
Oh, yeah, no.
I'm sorry. Where is it, Paul? Here, it's in the board.
Yeah, Board of Education.
Team Drive?
It's Google Drive.
On the Team Drive or my Drive?
Team Drive.
Okay.
Seventeen, eighteen.
It should say October there.
That's the one I want. And do you know who has it up on the screen?
Who's computer's going to the screen? So it's in this right now.
And then after that? No, I'm just wondering who's showing the Board of Education up on the screen. Because last time it was somebody else.
Alright, as the... as the rest of these flyers are passed around, again, I'm Mary Banco from the Transportation Department. And I'm here this evening to just kind of talk to you about some of the new things that we're doing to bring a focus to safety in our department, a focus for safety on the kids, for the kids. Some new things we're trying, some new ways we're trying to communicate with families and the kids, ways we're trying to make their ride as safe as possible, and also ways we're trying to make our public image as positive as it can be. Because, you know, as you know, our buses are on the road before the school day starts and after the school day ends. And we drive 44-foot-long, 15-ton big yellow billboards with our school name all over the side of it. So the things that we do with our kids to train them on safety comes through as a public image perception also as they see our sports teams going down the road, and the kids are in the seats and not jumping around like some districts, or things are not in the aisles. Everything that we can do to promote safety also helps our public image also. So Lucinda, it sounds like something weird.
Because we really like that picture.
That's... So I'm just going to do this. It'll be easier this way. So the first thing we started, actually, we started two years ago, and I have a copy of the letter that we sent home to the families so you can see what we send out every summer. One of our greatest challenges in our department is finding a way to communicate directly with parents. The website is fine, the online newsletter works well, but by and large, parents don't go to our transportation page to find out things. They're going to their school web page. So we needed a way to communicate with the parents on topics that really come up frequently throughout the school year. And the best way we could find was a summer mailing because every kid, I hope every kid, wants to know what bus they're going to be riding home that first day of school. So this letter allowed us to touch on some basic things, important safety reminders like being ready for the bus. The Bus Pass Guidelines, which the elementary and GLP schools especially use often, remembering that those notes need to be in before nine. District Guidelines for drop-off, reminding parents that pre-K through second, we won't let off the bus without a parent visible for the safety of their own kids. And basic behavior expectations, basically that you need to behave as well on the bus as you do in the classroom. It also allowed us, if you can see on the bottom, the ability to communicate individually directly about each kid with each parent. So if little Johnny's going to Grandma's on Tuesday and Thursday, and daycare Monday and Friday, and home the other day, we could put that all in the letter, and when the parents got the letter, if that didn't look right, or they thought, oh my gosh, I forgot to tell you they go to Grandma's on Wednesdays, they had a week or two before school started where they could get all that in and we could make sure they were on the right bus the first day of school. So we had a great deal of success with that the first year we did it. We did it again this past year. And along with that, just before the Corn Fest started, I put together just a quick safety flyer. And the beauty of the safety flyer is that it's self-generated, so we can cater that to individual groups or age groups or whatever we want to do, and as we need more, we just print it out. So the first place it went actually was the Corn Fest at the stand that the school had there. And we went through a couple hundred of them, and I would like to thank that a couple hundred of them were read before they became paper airplanes. But we did go through quite a few at the Corn Fest, and this particular one is geared mainly toward younger kids, younger families. The goal is, you know, if we can train the kids when they're little, they will grow up with the right sort of behaviors and safety standards. So this particular one was really geared toward parents with younger kids, but like I said, we can cater it to any age group. So we had them out at the Corn Fest stand. We also put them in the summer mailing that you just saw for all of the pre-K and the kindergarten families, and we sent one to each family. The letter that goes out actually goes to every single kid, because you might have a family with five kids, and one's in high school, one's in a special at school, two are in the elementary, and one's at the GLP. And they all go different places at the end of the day. So every kid gets a separate letter, but then every pre-K and kindergarten family also got the flyer. We also make sure that all of our new students get this, and we have a supply available all the time for the bus drivers. And they're using them pretty freely with, you know, like I said, we only did pre-K and kindergarten, so if they have an older kid or a third-grade kid or whatever that needs a reminder, or they want to communicate with the parents, this is a quick, easy way to do it, and then the parents are always free to call us at the garage also. Something else we're doing, which actually Mr. Cuddy brought up at the last board meeting, so I'll just touch on this quickly. We started a pre-K and kindergarten safety day, and I was glad to hear Mr. Cuddy bring it up because his wife came home and talked to him about it. So it told me that it was a hit, I hope. It seemed to be well-received by the teachers and the kids, and it's definitely something that we will continue to do each year. So the second week of school, we invited at the GLP all of the pre-K and kindergarten parents to come in with their kids if they wanted to. And there was... each class had a half hour. The class would come individually with their teacher, and the parents were already in the classroom. And they would watch a short video, actually created by Disney. It's a really great video that hits on all of the major safety and bus rules in a kind of a fun, entertaining, Disney sort of a way. And it's Winnie the Pooh and all his friends, and they go on this grand adventure to take Christopher Robin's lunch to him, and they go on their bus adventure, and they learn all the bus rules. And after the video, we talked for just a couple minutes about some of the things we learned, and then the class would go get on the bus, and they would practice the things that they just learned. And if you see on the video clip up there, that's Winnie the Pooh and his friends taking their 10 giant steps out in front of the bus before they cross the road. So after the bus ride, the teachers would take kids two by two and work with the driver. And you can see Mrs. Urson and her two kids with her taking their giant steps out front like they saw in the video and practicing their crossing procedures, which is one of our greatest challenges in the Transportation Department, is getting the kids to follow those crossing procedures, because it's so easy when you're a kid. At the end of the day, you see Grandma or Grandma or whoever across the road, and all they want to do is run. But, you know, you'd like to think that just because we have the stop signs and the stoplights on the buses, that cars are stopping, but they don't haul. So one of our big focuses this year is getting all of the kids to really be mindful of the fact that they need to watch the driver and hug Grandma after they get across the road. So this was a big first step. Like I said, earlier we trained the kids, the more likely they are to repeat those habits. And our drivers remind, there's safety things that happen on the bus every single day. This is something we'll definitely do every year, though it seems to be a pretty big hit. Another thing that we're enhancing this year, we've always done bus safety drills. They're actually required by the State Ed Department. There are three required during the school year. They provide the times of year that we need to do them. One of our challenges in the past has been that we're required to educate all students, not just the bus drivers. And in the past, we've done the drills in the beginning of the day when the buses get to school. So the drivers do a great job of educating the kids about all of the emergency, how to get out the back door, or where the fire extinguisher is, how to use the two-way radio, god forbid something happened to the driver. But we were only educating the kids on the bus, except at the GLP level, I lost track of Mrs. Carter. But at the GLP, the phys ed teachers have always had a really good program where they set up... We bring a bus up, they bring a mat out, and they practice evacuation. They talk about all of the bus safety rules, how to use a seatbelt if you're going to wear it, how to adjust it, how to get out of a side window, all that kind of stuff. So we... I contacted the high school and the elementary schools this year and was thrilled at the reception. So we now have at all three schools the phys ed teachers participating in the same safety drill. And the advantage to that is that, number one, it hits all of the kids, but number two, one of the challenges we had back when we used to do the evacuations at the high school is the kids were in, they might be in flip-flops or high heels, or the girls had skirts on, and it... kids were tripping, and if it was raining outside, they might fall as they got off or whatever. So doing it in phys ed class allows the kids to be in the proper footwear and educate again all of the kids, not just the kids riding the bus. They talk, like I said, they talk about emergency exits, fire extinguishers, safe loading and unloading procedures, bus behavior, how to use a seatbelt, and we're now fully compliant with the State Ed regulations also. Something else we're doing, which might seem at first glance to really benefit a lot of the drivers, but this is a mirror adjustment grid, and its goal is to make all areas around the bus visible. So the 15 feet surrounding a school bus all the way around is the most unsafe area of the bus. That's where it's easy to lose a kid, lose sight of the kid, a dog runs out from the side of the street, a little brother, you know, breaks grip from mom and runs out to meet big brother. So this is a way for us to make sure that our mirrors are adjusted so we can see all of those blind spots, because a school bus is just riddled with blind spots. So I have the paint at my office, and you'll see over the next couple days, dots going on our parking lot. And the driver will pull into this spot, just like they show here. And the goal is that every single one of the dots that we have on the parking lot should be visible from one of the mirrors. Doesn't matter which mirror, but you need to be able to see every one of those spots. And if you can't, then we need to get those mirrors adjusted. About half of our fleet has automatic mirrors like our cars do. The other half is manual. So the mechanics will work with the drivers. And this will allow substitutes to make sure their mirrors are adjusted, because there's five-foot-two Mary and six-foot-seven Dale driving the same bus perhaps in the same day. So this makes it easy for someone to pull in and make sure that their mirrors are adjusted where they need to be. And finally, the last thing I'll talk about this evening are bus cameras. Cameras have a lot of benefits on the bus. I mean, there's video surveillance just about everywhere you go now. One of the things it does is promote good behavior, because by and large, most people are not as likely to misbehave if they know that they're being watched. And when there is some sort of an infraction on the bus, if the principal calls and they say Johnny said Suzie stole his lunch, and we can pull the bus video, and look, and we can hear the audio, and we can see what led up to it, and it gives us a good unbiased view of what happened. So it's not he said, she said, trying to figure out what happened. And it also helps, god forbid we have an accident, to see what happened, what led up to it, what happened after it. And we've used it in the past unfortunately, but it is a good tool for investigating accidents. And it's also a great tool for driver training within the bus garage, so we can show video clips of what we could do better, what we do great, you know, what happens if we hit the brakes too hard, things like that. And almost from the first minute I met Laura Felton, she said to me, we're going to get cameras on every single one of the buses. And we right now have them on a little... I'd say about half of our buses. So she sent me to the task of getting prices and investigating different vendors, and she set to the task of asking State Ed for approval to reimburse this. Eaton has a 72% transportation aid ratio, so that means that when we go out and buy the cameras, the State Ed Department will win about 72% of the cost. And State Ed did come through with the approval, so we're at a point now where Laura's looking at State Ed for the best price. The vendors are all pretty par, on par as far as quality. So we hope very quickly, within the next month or two, to have the whole fleet outfitted with cameras that we can use. And we have more things coming down the pipe, but I'm going to save them until the spring and we're excited about some new ventures that are happening within the garage and within the community. And I just want to put it out there that we are constantly looking for new ways to improve safety, to make the ride easier and better for the kids. There's somebody in our office from 5:00 in the morning till 4:30 every afternoon. We're open for ideas and suggestions. All of the things we're doing are certainly not new ideas. We're stealing them from other districts. We've seen them work other places. So we're always open for new ideas and always willing to listen to questions or comments, or if you're wondering why we do something on the road, by all means, call and ask. And I guess that's it for me. Do you guys have any questions or comments? Alright, thank you for listening.
So Mary's voice is one of the new ones you might hear on School Messenger, because she's sending out the messages for half-day. So thank you also for doing that, Mary. I appreciate it. Alright, am I on? Alright, up next is the middle school transition update.
Okay, well, I just want to say thank you to the Board for having us tonight. Congratulations on Board Appreciation Night. Thanks to Emma Shidel, who did a great job for the junior/senior high. She's truly one of our student leaders in the building, and she does a lot of great things. So thanks, Emma. We'll start by just introducing our group, and then we'll begin the presentation.
I'm Brayne Woodard. I teach sixth grade social studies in ELA.
I'm Lori Von Kauske. I teach sixth grade science and my homeroom social studies.
Joanne Meredith.
You had a good day today.
Jeff Sardone, principal of the junior/senior high school. So we have a little presentation that we want to share with the Board. This is an update from our July presentation that we did in the junior/senior high library. And we've had some pretty good meetings with middle school committees leading up to tonight's board presentation. And I know a few of the Board members were present at our last meeting, so I want to just thank you for joining us in that.
Joanne, can you all hear Jeff? Okay, because if at any point you can't, just get up and hand him the mic.
Yeah, if you want me to have a mic, that's fine.
I just want to make sure everybody can hear.
So we've been working hard on the middle school. We've been meeting as a committee, tons of meetings, a lot of working on how we make this transition of sixth grade up into the middle school, and then how we actually make a middle school. So this presentation will focus a little on the sixth grade schedule and then the middle school as Eaton Middle School. So this is a schedule that we've been cheering for quite a while. We just want to re-show. It's the... this is what a sixth grader's schedule will look like when they come up to the middle school. You can see how, on the left, we have the nine-period day, which they will follow the same schedule that is currently at the junior/senior high school when they come up to Eaton Middle School. But we have blocked it out a little bit, and we do have a great teaming model. If you notice, Team 1, Team 2 at the top, and then we have two teachers per team. As we pretty much break that class of 100 into two. And the colors are how a student's day would go. So if you're Teacher A and your student, you know, a yellow student, you start off in ELA, you transition to math, periods 4, 5, 6, which is truly the only time a sixth grader will move around. We have our orchestra band in PE, we have a lunch period, and then we have our 10-week rotators that all sixth graders will participate in, coding class, Family Consumer Science, Technology Education, and health. And three of those four help us meet middle school requirements, which we're thrilled about. After they come out of their period 4, 5, 6, they go back into science, or social, and at the end of the day, we have an enrichment, AIS, and resource. Any questions, any comments?
So I think it's worth mentioning of why the yellow and the green is different than the blue and the red. Because in the yellow and the green, you have an ELA science matchup with Teacher A, but in the blue and the red, it's different.
So really what we did is the ELA and math get the same amount of time. In the two different teams, we've really just worked on teacher strengths in their areas, and that's why you see a difference in the science and social from Team 1 and Team 2. I think that's what you're talking about, Sandy. So we love this model. The committee has... likes this plan, and we think this is going to be real successful for our sixth graders.
So an example of Team 1, Teacher A, would be whom? So it could be you, okay. And Teacher B could be you, when you can talk. Okay. So the purpose of it is to reduce the number of teachers that a student in sixth grade has, but also to reduce the number of times that they move around the building.
Yeah, this really is sort of like a block-type schedule in our nine-period day. Some of the things we heard about, we're keeping our sixth graders kind of in one area. We've worked really hard to make the upstairs in this building the middle school. Certainly, we have some outliers of ninth-grade classes and some things that we're working on, what we've had put a focus. And really, on the sixth graders, kind of being that transitional year, sort of a hybrid schedule, very common in middle schools all over the place. Seventh and eighth grade are more traditional period. Sixth grade, more of a hybrid, what you see here, because they're getting used to a middle school, and they do change class, and we are giving them some ownership of their day. But we're also keeping them contained and not moving as much as a seventh or eighth grader. So we think this is going to lead great into seventh and eighth grade. So really, upstairs in the junior/senior high right now, we've designated some area... So really, upstairs in the junior senior high right now, we've designated some area, one hallway, four classrooms, actually five classrooms, or four main rooms, where they'll do the ELA math, science, and social. The band orchestra, PE and chorus, they will move around the building. They will come here for lunch, they will go to the main office if they need to, I mean, there's certainly going to be some movement around, movement around the building. But I think we've done a really nice job of keeping these sixth graders in a pretty contained area. With middle school students?
Can I just ask a question about that last, that enrichment, AIS period? So I know I was at that other meeting you had, and you talked about the homeroom teachers doing AIS in the room. They would be responsible for AIS, but they're also responsible for the enrichment?
We've talked more about it, we had another meeting since that meeting, and discussed that, and certainly we've fleshed out what's been going on right now.
Okay.
Our enrichment, AIS teachers that are designated just AIS teachers in the sixth grade level right now, so the thought is, we are, which we talked about, doing the high school scheduling right now, two months early, to be able to find out where we can do the shared teachers for the student middle school, but also Mrs. Carter and Mrs. LaRosa are looking at their schedule, so that we're probably going to be grabbing some of those AIS teachers to bring them up.
That's exactly what I was wondering, because I was thinking, you have all those AIS teachers who all of a sudden will not have responsibilities because sixth grade's coming up, so...
We just need to figure out how to do that.
How to do that. Okay.
So everybody's cranking about four months early just to try to figure it out.
Right.
Right.
And I understand that that's going to be difficult, but that would be great, if you could work that out.
I think it's a point now, it's scheduling, and that's why we're trying to get a jumpstart on it.
And there was a really good question that was brought up, and I don't remember who brought it up at one of those meetings. It actually may have been Marlene, is the focus on sixth grade as opposed to all of middle school? And all of us, there's some things that we just don't know how it's going to work out, and so to do a full block schedule for sixth grade and work out the kinks before we go to teaming in seventh and eighth grade will give us an opportunity to not make a massive mistake if we've really missed something, and just be able to work it out over time. So the hope is, while a seventh grade teacher can't block like this, because they're certified per subject area, the hope is the following year to commit to teaming, so that you get that idea of fewer teachers within a group of students, and that is the concept of teaming. So we're excited to see what we've missed, right, but also excited to try out what's new.
Yeah, good. Any other questions, Alice? So this is just continuation of the update, we continue as a committee to meet and iron out scheduling concerns. I can say a lot of things will come up as we start to build the schedule. Amy Banks is doing a great job in the guidance office here, really moving the course scheduling forward. I think next week, they're meeting with all the kids to start cranking on kids picking courses, so that we can start to build schedules and just get a jumpstart on building a sixth or twelve schedule. So that's something we keep going on. We did pass out a questionnaire at the fifth... Yeah, Scott, Scott Bitts has already been down to the elementary school, talked about foreign language.
Can I ask a question about that? Is what a child put on that, okay, because I wasn't really impressed with her choice.
She just wanted the ballpark.
Okay.
Yeah, it gives us an idea for scheduling.
He's going to come back at the end of March, April, and then they actually goes home.
Okay.
So they just are...
Okay, perfect, because I'm like, I think we need to have a little conversation before this sentence.